Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the St. George's municipality meeting. My name is Adaranka Badamosi-Wilson and I'm the moderator for tonight's discussion. I am pleased to introduce the Minister of Home Affairs, the Honorable Walter Roban, JP MP, and he will give a statement after we watch a brief video. I'd also like to acknowledge our audience this evening, the Minister with our portfolio, the Honorable Jamal Simmons, JP MP. Also pleased to acknowledge the Mayor of St. George's, the right worshipful Quinale Francis, and the Mayor of Hamilton, the right worshipful Charles Gosling, and their respective council members. And I also acknowledge in our audience, members of parliament and members of the Senate. Please be aware. ... broadcasting and they're also recording today's event. So we'll start with a brief video and then Minister Walter Roban will give an opening statement and then I'll come back and discuss how we're going to work for the rest of tonight.
Bermuda is a beautiful place to live and work. Of that, there can be no question. With our pristine beaches, unique architecture, and vibrant culture, there's no other place like us in the world. But what if we could be more? What if our capital city could be more? What if our waterfront could be more? When we look at other cities around the world with rejuvenated waterfronts, it opens our eyes to what could be Cape Town, Toronto, Darwin, Singapore, Cardiff. The joy of waterfronts is the joy of water. Healing, soothing, rejuvenating. The successful waterfronts are ones that work for tourists and residents alike, creating a vibrant oasis for culture, festivals, shopping, dining, and just chilling out. This government has a vision for Hamilton's waterfront and a vision for the city of Hamilton itself. That vision is a smart city infrastructure with a thriving residential center and entertainment hub. In order to achieve this vision, the following needs must be met. The development of a multi-passionate waterfront, increased city living, increased use of vacant office space, effective traffic management using smart city technology, and encouraging the development of districts within the city such as financial, entertainment, and restaurant districts. Turning eastward, we have the whimsical town of St. George, a treasured World Heritage Site and a historical gem. Unlike its business-focused counterparts, the town of St. George is largely residential. But both the city of Hamilton and the town of St. George play a crucial role in the economic health and wealth of Bermuda. For the town of St. George, government envisions a mega yacht port and marina with enhanced infrastructure amenities and activities. In order to achieve this vision, the following needs must be met. A sustainable management plan for the World Heritage Site with the appropriate legislation and funding that will give the municipality the ability to effectively implement any recommendations that are identified. A sustainable year-round industry, infrastructure and amenities to address the needs of the community, including its businesses, and general necessary infrastructure upgrades. Both Hamilton and St. George must be rejuvenated into becoming vibrant entities in order to attract more visitors and greater investment opportunities for our island and its people. At present, both entities have crumbling infrastructure and empty buildings that do not reflect a thriving city and town that is attracted to both visitors and investors. Evidence suggests that neither corporation has the financial and other means to achieve and sustain the vision to rejuvenate the cities. It is also evident that the central government has a greater access to the resources and expertise needed to achieve the vision. This government believes that the two levels of government can no longer operate in economic or decision-making silos. This is why making municipal reform is a priority. This is why we made ensuring the growth and development of the municipalities a 2018 Thorough Speech Initiative. Throughout 2018, there were several meetings held between the government and various stakeholder groups seeking feedback on the future of Bermuda's municipalities. There was also a public survey which was carried out in September 2018, as well as the town hall meetings in the spring and summer of 2018. Following this public consultation, a policy document was created for the consideration by you, the public. The document, which was posted on the Government of Bermuda Citizens' Form in February, invited the public to comment on two options which the government was considering as they moved forward with reforming the municipalities. Those two options were: one, change both corporations to quangos, leaving each organization intact as a corporate body but increasing the government's oversight over key initiatives; two, dissolve the corporation, repealing the municipalities act and integrating the corporation's various functions into the government's administrative structure. As a result of the public feedback, the government has decided to proceed with the first option: change both corporations to quangos. This government believes that this will help us reach our vision for the two municipalities.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Just some housekeeping, if you're standing at the back, there are still a few chairs throughout the auditorium, so please help yourself to a chair, and restrooms are just outside this door over here. Minister, I'd like to invite you to the podium to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here in St. George's and very happy to be here to talk to you about the future. And as protocol has been established, but I will not miss the opportunity to certainly recognize the Mayor of St. George and her councillors, whom I've had the opportunity to speak with about these plans, and of course, the Mayor of Hamilton is here, members of parliament who I know are committed to seeing that the best is gained for St. George's, and you, you who are the citizens and residents of St. George. I'm very happy and honored to be here with you tonight. I know many of you have questions and comments, so I'll keep my remarks brief, because I understand that there's a lot of uncertainty amongst many of you about the bill that we tabled last week, to repeal the elections of Hamilton and St. George, and to continue the corporations as councils, as quangos, sorry. But I can commit to you that this government believes that this will be a good thing for St. George. Let me just share with you some of the things the bill will mean for the old town of St. George. It will mean enhanced services, including the deployment of smart city technology. It will mean improved infrastructure. It will mean better upkeep of public spaces, and it will allow finally for the creation of a marina, which St. Georgians have long desired. It will enable the creation of a World Heritage Management Plan for the town, which is crucial for the continuation of St. George's as a UNESCO World Heritage Site. It will improve the financial management of the town. It will improve communications between the residents and the officials of the corporation, and ensure residents have a say in the creation of a strategic plan for the town. Now let me tell you what it's not going to mean. It does not mean any loss of jobs to those who work for the Corporation of St. George. It does not mean any loss of jobs for the workers. It does not mean government will dismantle the existing operation structure of each municipality, or do away with the positions of mayors or councillors. There will continue to be mayor, and there will continue to be a councillors. It does not mean a takeover. That's a word that's been bandied quite about over the last couple of weeks. It does not mean a takeover of the town for those of you who live and work in the town of St. George. The people of St. George will be the ones making the decisions for the town. Persons who reside, or do business, or work in the town will have the opportunity to provide input to the selection process of the mayor and the eight councillors, especially four of those councillors. It does not mean an asset grab. It's another phrase that's been bandied around quite a bit, "no asset grab," because the municipality will remain a body corporate as it is now. Put simply, the government intends to provide more support for St. George's. More support. In fact, that work has already begun. For example, the Department of Planning is currently doing the work to prepare the plan for the UNESCO World Heritage Site for St. George. Currently, the status of St. George's World Heritage Designation is under threat, and that's partly because there has been no plan. The lack of a proper plan. In addition, the Corporation of St. George does not have the funds to undertake crucial infrastructure repairs, and has traditionally approached the government for a grant for such work between the amounts of $1 million to $2 million. As a result, the government intends to give greater authority to the Corporation of St. George, both legislatively and financially, with our proposals. For investors to take an interest in Bermuda, they must also view the municipalities as thriving entities worth consideration for their investment. As stated in the consultation document, the corporations are the lifeblood of the island. They are the lifeblood of Bermuda, and they are a reflection of our economic and social health. For the town of St. George, which is truly Bermuda's cultural gem, it is envisioned that there will be a mega yacht port and marina with enhanced infrastructure amenities and services and activities. As we have just seen on the video which we presented to you, in order to achieve this vision, the following must be done, and needs must be met. A sustainable management plan for the World Heritage Site. This will be achieved through legislative changes and the appropriate financial support. A sustained and non-seasonal industry, which can be helped by the mega yacht port and marina. We will maximize on the appeal of the important cultural heritage of St. George and its designation as a World Heritage Site. Infrastructure and amenities to address the needs of the whole community, those who live here, those who work here, those who have businesses here, and particularly with the St. Regis development. This includes the development of a proper sewage and potable water plant, which will service both the hotel and the town, and the general infrastructure upgrades which are required. This will be done in cooperation with both the Ministry of Public Works and Tourism and Transport. It should be stressed that despite what you've heard, this vision wasn't created in isolation of anything, of all that has happened, of all that has been done certainly since this government has come to power. Through 2018, there were regular meetings between the government and stakeholders. There was also a public survey, which was carried out in September of 2018, as well as there were town hall meetings in spring and in August, May in particular, and August of 2018. In 2018, during the public consultation, the government committed to a policy document, which would, and I will quote, "be made available for review and comment by the general public prior to the government making a decision on the optimal governance model for the municipalities in Bermuda." That policy document was created for public feedback and is what was posted on the government portal called the Citizens' Form in February of last month. While we acknowledge that both corporations have made significant achievements, we must also ensure that they are serving the needs of you, the public, the businesses, those who visit your respective towns, but particularly St. George. And what we know, and what we've learned through the process which has gone on not only just since July of 2017, but even going back, because there have been numerous studies done on the municipalities, and looking at how their futures can be properly shaped. And we understand that having two levels of government, national and municipal, at this stage is no longer the best way to operate and to have conflict between the economic and decision-making of respective areas of the island. We cannot have an economic and decision-making silos which are separate in 22 square miles. It's just not fit for the 21st century. Let me just say a few other things to you all who are here tonight. St. George's is truly the gem of this country. It is where its history started. It has features like where the gunpowder plot went on. It has features like the story of Jimmy Darrell, of the man who was the barber who then became one of the first black U.S. congressmen. It has Shimbun Alley, which is one of the earliest places where free blacks owned property. This is the great story that St. George's is. And doesn't it deserve an international stage? Doesn't it deserve to be known by the world in a greater way? Ensuring that you keep your World Heritage Designated Site will help that. Ensuring that there's funding to support the management plan will do that. Making sure that there is the resources in cooperation with the government to deal with architecture, to deal with infrastructure. Right now, St. George's has to deal with those things themselves. The government wants to partner to make sure going forward that those things are taken care of, and St. George's can focus on being the gem that you are. So that is a part of the vision and what you've heard tonight. We want to give St. George's more so St. George's can be more for all of you. So I thank you tonight, and I'm happy to now take any questions or comments that you
So ladies and gentlemen, let me just give you some guidelines on how we're going to make sure that as many of you get to have questions asked or to be able to provide a comment. And so there are two microphones here at the front of the room, one right here in the middle, and another one on this side of the room. If you want to make a statement, come to one of the microphones, and I'll alternate between the two in order to get the questions asked. You have two minutes in order to give your statement, or ask your question, or both. And I'm going to ask you, because we have so many people, that you only speak once, because we do want to hear as many voices as possible. I'm going to ask you also to speak without being offensive, listen without being defensive. And what that means is, listen to the intent of what the person is saying, listen to their underlying message, and take that away from you. We're not here to agree. We don't have to agree with a statement that was said earlier by anybody here. Direct your questions or your comments to the stage, and if there are any topics that come up that are outside of our realm of discussion today, my colleagues will make note of it, and will look at how we'll address those topics at a later date. If you do not wish to come to one of the microphones, two of my colleagues are here this evening, one on this side, Honey, and the other one, Helen. They will have cards and pens with them, so if you want to write your question or comment on a card, indicate to one of them, and they will bring you a card and a pen, and they'll then bring it to me, and I'll read your statement. The only thing that I ask, please print so that I can read your writing and represent your question or your comment accurately. So I'm just going to start my clock so that we all have a clear two minutes. Okay, sir?
Good evening, honorable ministers and people, neighbors of St. George's. Good evening, all. I'd like to thank you for having this. Is the first official meeting, is it the first official meeting of this subject with the townspeople of St. George's?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, sir, for attending. We did have one a couple of weeks ago, but nonetheless. Okay, so first things first. All the visions that you have, that I've heard, are spectacular. They're wonderful. We want it, we need it. However, we're townspeople. We've lived here. We've heard of visions. We are pretty delirious of all the visions that we've heard and never received. That's the first thing. Second thing is, we've lost our fire brigade, we've lost our police station, we've lost our golf course, we've lost our operating privately-run golf club, right? We have two bridges to cross to get here that does not work. There's a lot of things that have to be done. Building the infrastructure of our town is a necessity. Building the people within our town is mandatory. When we travel, we don't like to travel and hang out with other tourists. We want to hang out with locals. If the locals aren't happy, we can have as many people come visit us. We don't hang out. So would you please explain to me how we can achieve this vision with keeping our corporation? Why is it mandatory to dismantle our corporation or move the goalposts and not achieve that particular vision that you have? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Still have a minute fifty-eight.
Thank you for your question and your comments. Firstly, we're not dismantling the corporation. We're merely changing the model of governance from what it is now under the Municipalities Act of 1923 to a quango. That is what we're doing. So we're not dismantling. There will still be a mayor, there will still be councillors, so we are not dismantling. Two, through the experience of the government, we have found the current model inefficient and not able for us to satisfy many of the key needs of St. George's. One of the reasons that the marina project has been perhaps even slow or nonexistent in its completion is because the current structure as a municipality made it very difficult for this particular project to be done in a way that would ensure its delivery for St. George's. Creating the model of a quango will help us to solve that issue. And the government is committed to putting forth legislation, as I said in my statement, legislatively and financially. We will be drafting legislation to ensure the development of a marina. It's my next priority, once this reform process is over, is to work on that particular plan that, I believe, will assist with some of the issues that the people have. It will bring life back to St. George's in ways that it's not here. It will bring business back, because the activity related to the marina and the mega yacht port will cultivate an interest, and there'll be jobs created for St. Georgians. It will bring business back into St. Georgians that will help to service that and other activities in the town. So our focus is to bring more back into St. George's that will aid the people that you speak of, to aid the town in itself, and allow St. Georgians to be involved with that process.
Thank you, Minister. I have a question from the floor. What is smart city technology? What does that include or add to St. George's?
Thank you for that question. Smart city technology is technology that's been deployed around the world in many well-known cities. It will help manage traffic. It'll help manage issues of parking. It will allow the movement through the town when it's deployed to be more efficient and to be conducive to good leavin'. It will even enhance security as well. But it aids the use and the efficiency of those who live in those centers. We want to bring this to a level in St. George's that will be consistent with your UNESCO World Heritage Management Plan, but also will enhance the usage of the town. It's my understanding that parking is an issue in the town for those who live here. Smart city technology and the proper planning will help that, so that visitors and residents can have better use of the town and ensure that things move forward that are technology-driven, driven on data, but also will help the overall welfare of the town. And it will be deployed in a way that is particular to the needs of St. George's, not just cookie cutter. Whatever your needs are, the technology can be tailored to do that.
We have another question from the floor. Who is going to elect the mayor and councillors?
As we outlined in the statement, there will not be an election. It will be the responsibility of the minister to choose those who run the quango, but there will be a component of that quango which will actually be selected by the residents. Those who live, those who work, and those who have businesses in the town, and they are the only persons who can participate in that process. So there will be a component of that quango which will be selected by those who are in the town. So they will represent the interests of the residents of the town. And the mayor and the other members will be selected by the minister, according to the legislation.
Thank you. Sir, two minutes?
Yes, Minister. As you probably know, I've worked on several boards and committees over the years. The devil is always in the details. One of the problems we have is with political appointments. I've worked on boards and committees where people are appointed, good people, but they're not necessarily really interested in what's going on in that area. If the people who are really involved in this, people who live in the town, are not going to be electing the mayor and the councillor. Now, you understand that you said some will be appointed. In fact, you said, from what I understand, the mayor will be appointed by the minister. I'm not sure if that's really the will of the people, or if that is really going to be the best solution. I agree that things need to be changed, and there is a lot that needs to be done, but the moment we have a situation where it's done on a political way, that one party moves out, another party moves in, we get the changes, and heaven knows where we'll be. And so the plans themselves, the development, I think everyone will agree with, but the devil is in the details.
Thank you.
Firstly, the people who you have as your mayor and councillors are excellent people. They are clearly dedicated to the town and its welfare. Perhaps their challenge is that they haven't had the resources to fulfill what they want for the town. And that's, those are some of the constraints under the current municipality's model because St. George's has limited financial resources based on the current model. Going forward, part of the plan will be to ensure that people are on the council who actually have some of the skill sets that are going to enhance the town. And these are the people from St. George's. Perhaps an architect, someone who's an engineer, someone who's a cultural advocate, they can be also members of the body as well. So that you have the people there who can, who have the expertise as well to fulfill the vision that's required. And some of those people will be people who will be your neighbors, who you can choose as well. So there'll be a part that the minister does select, but then there's also who will have requisite skills, but also people who you want to be on there. And you can put those names forth to be on the council as well.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Hi. Hi. Good evening. It was my understanding that the Municipalities Act of 2011 gave the authority to the minister to actually do what you are suggesting right now. I believe that the corporation of St. George's and the mayor have to get your approval or the minister's approval for most of the expenditure and things that they do. So I don't actually see why you are trying to take away the right of the residents of St. George's to vote, because that's essentially what you're doing. You're taking away our right to vote for the people that represent us on the corporation. I'd also like to know if the people that you are suggesting putting on the corporation are going to be paid a salary. Right now, the people that run on the corporation are volunteers and do a superb job. And I speak to the earlier gentleman, before we do any of the other mega yacht, which I agree we need, I don't know where the money is gonna come from, but I think the money for the bridges and getting the police station open again and a fire service back in St. George's are far more important right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and your question. Some of those things, once the heritage management plan is put in place and can actually, can potentially be reviewed and considered, consistent with the plan. The government intends to give as much support as possible to St. George's, consistent with that management plan. Now, when it comes to, I appreciate your concern about that you look like you're losing the vote for those who are running the corporation now. But the reality of this is that the current model is the very limitation that unfortunately St. George's has. And we're trying to devise a modern structure for St. George's that will ensure that St. George's has the resources it needs. So the person who will chair, who will chair the actual quango will be the mayor. The other members will be councillors and they will conduct themselves just in the same way that you have become accustomed to having them act. They will still be responsible to you. There'll obviously be some responsibility to the government, but they'll be getting the support so that they can be better services of your needs, of which they are limited at right now. You have a very good team here, but they're not limited by their own will or by their own energy or their enthusiasm or commitment to the town. They're limited by resources. We want to ensure that St. Georgians, who will be a part of the future organization, will have the resources. And it will be St. Georgians who have the decision-making power in partnership with the government in making sure that you get what you need.
Thank you, Minister. Sir?
Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. To keep this as quick as I can, I come with the perspective of someone who has a business in the western quango. I figured out it's quango. And in my opinion, the quango is not a good model for St. George, and his reasons why is that. You have a democratic institution here, yeah? And whilst the minister may not wanna style it as a takeover, it's effectively what it is. What worries me going forward is that, because this seems a bit like a coup d'etat in reverse by central government, is that at what point does a central government in Bermuda decide that we wanna take something else? So I'm thinking of a dystopian future. Where two young lads turn around and say, remember democracy? And the other one says, it started with the municipalities. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Minister? Okay. Okay. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Minister for Public Works, Lieutenant Colonel the Honorable David Birch, and belatedly, the Minister of Tourism and Transport, the Honorable Zane de Silver. I have a question from the floor, Minister. Will the size of the municipality change?
The answer at this point, no. Everything will remain the same. But if there's any consideration for that, that will be done with, with discussions with those who are in St. George's, if there's to be any change. There are no plans to change, but if there's a desire to change, the government will work with St. Georgians and those who are involved with the affairs of St. George to discuss what changes they want.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Hi, good evening. So I just kinda feel compelled to say, I think it's a little misleading when you say people who have some involvement in the election of the other four councillors, or the appointment, I should say. So you have, we're still gonna have our eight councillors and our mayor four being appointed, four councillors being appointed, plus the mayor, and then according to the bill, there's this selection committee that's gonna appoint the remaining four, made up of three people. And it also might seem to go that that selection committee is appointed by you as well. So essentially, you, seems to me as if you appoint all the individuals. If the three people are part of this next selection committee are who is choosing these other four people, and you choose the three people as well, it comes off to me as if you really have to say up the whole committee.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. The persons who will be on the selection committee will be from the town, and they will be selecting those persons who put them, who put their names forward to be considered to sit on the corporation. They could be any one of you in this room. Any one of you could be a part of that selection committee. It will come from people from, from within St. George's. So those persons are who you will recommend to the minister to be as part of the quango. They will be who you want to be on there amongst that group that is chosen through the selection committee. They will be chosen by you. You will recommend them to the minister and the minister will put those persons, because that is your wish.
Thank you, Minister. Sir?
Okay, good evening. I heard that the visitor service bureau is moving from the square into the Gossam's building on York Street. That's gonna be a disaster. And I think it needs to be rethought. Leave that visitor service bureau where it is. You don't put a visitor service bureau in the middle of a town and tourists are just thinking that the world belongs to them and all of them, you have a slip, all of St. George's are the mess of the whole of St. George's. I think you gotta reconsider that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Two questions. If government is unable to introduce smart technology to public transport, how will they introduce it to a town? First question. Second question. If you remove our democratic process for choosing our representatives, then appoint the mayor and councillors and give them resources, why not just give our elected corporation the resources?
Smart technology and public transport. You wanna answer that?
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. With regard to smart technology and transport, we are looking at a few options at the moment. You might have known that there was an RFP put out for buses a few weeks back. In fact, the deadline was, for submissions, were last week. So once we get those and we, we have a good look at them, decisions will be made. But I also know that we're, we're looking at the, I think it's called the Smart Fair, where we, where you can, and actually, some of those things is gonna be, we're hoping that we get to a place where persons can look on their phone and find out where buses are, what time they're gonna arrive, and things like that. So that, that we're looking at and we'll look at in depth in the future. I mean, that's the way it's going. I'm a little old-fashioned myself. You know, I just started using things like, you know, Google Map and Waze and, and these things that you can, you know, you punch in an address and you can walk to a place. You can, if you're in a taxi or if you're in your car, it's like, you know, you have your own GPS. So those are the things that we are looking at. But within the next, within the next short period of time, I think you'll hear some more on that.
So I'll answer the second question. If you remove our democratic process for choosing our representatives, then appoint the mayor and councillors, give them resources, why not just give them our, give our elected corporation the resources? Well, that's what's been going on for quite some time in that the corporation, because of the separation between the municipality and the government, there can only be a grant. But that grant is discretionary. Previous administrations have not chosen to give St. George's that money. One of the ways is how the quango will work better is that with that type of relationship with government, government not only, because the quango is gonna be tasked with fulfilling a vision that is going to be complementary to the town, the government will afford the financial support because the running and the management of the town will be in the hands of the quango, consistent with the World Heritage Management Plan, and the government is committed to funding that. So right now, the corporation is able to take care of its day-to-day affairs. That's not gonna change. It still has the wharfage, it still has other ways of raising funding. That's not gonna change. But it will have the aid for capital investment with the support of the government, and also it will have greater financial strength because if it desires to raise capital itself to do a project, it will get the government's guarantee to support it, just as other quangos do. As was referred to with some other quangos earlier, well, in the West End, that quango has aided with creating a part of the island that is now one of the most popular parts of the island. Much of that time, that particular quango, other than when it's borrowed money, has been self-funding. And it has managed to turn the dockyard, is that what I'm referring to, into one of the greatest attractions that Bermuda has. We feel that that's also possible for St. George's. And that's one of the reasons why we would like to go in this direction, so that St. George's can have the same opportunities that other parts of the island has had to advance itself, governing itself, in partnership with the government to aid in its development. Right now, the Municipalities Act of 2023 stops that.
We have another question from the floor. How about a bus schedule before high technology?
Well, I echo that. But let me say this. We are very, very close to, to announcing that. And, and, and I know I hear some laughs, that's okay, that's cool, that's all right. But let me, let me, let me say this. There is announcement in December that the first time in seventeen years, we have a bus schedule coming, and, and we're on the brink. In fact, you may find that there is announcement within the next seventy-two hours. And, and let me, whilst I have the mic and while we're talking about buses and the schedules, let me commend and thank the local Bermudian bus drivers who finalized that schedule.
The next question from the floor. Why not just give the corporation the funding rather than a grant?
I think I already answered that question already, but I will just reiterate again. The current act, 1923 Act, when it comes to infrastructure and other areas of responsibility of the corporation, it is supposed to be, that is their responsibility, not the government. Grants are discretionary. They are at the whim of the priorities of the government. When the city, or when the town becomes a quango, it then becomes a part of the government's wider priority and gets the benefit of being a part of how government plans out its investment, how it plans out its funding. And when it comes to particularly, our priority is to make sure that St. George's has its UNESCO World Heritage Site designation. The government is committed to making sure that is properly run, that is properly managed by St. Georgians, and that the funding will be there to ensure that St. George's has success. Right now, there is not the feasibility to easily do that. We want to make sure St. George's has more, and this new model going forward will make sure that happens.
Thank you, Minister. Sir?
Good evening. My name's Ivan Smith. I'm out of Shinnburne Alley, so therefore, I'm a St. Georgian before I'm a Bermudian. Very quickly on transportation, Mr. Minister on transportation, I've been around the world twice. Last month, I just came back from Hong Kong, and they've had a first-class transportation system for many years. London has one of the finest transit systems in the world, so I don't know what you're talking about. Back to quangos. Westgate, just outside of Westgate, there you've got the new entity there. Does not really affect the people of Somerset. What I'm suggesting, the rules by the quango there has no regard for the people of Bermuda. It's just a financial game for the Redco people. You are taking my right away. As a St. Georgian, I cannot pick the folk that I want. So in other words, to me, that's dictatorship. If you're gonna produce a rule for a quango, then why not amend the Municipality Act so you can give my mayor the money that St. George's needs? And if my people here in St. George, if they are too stupid, as you're alluding, that they cannot do what they want for the town because of the lack of funds, change the law and just give them the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would hope that no one is believing that we have come to St. George's and made these proposals because we believe St. Georgians are anything other than but wonderful, beautiful people, that we believe in, we believe in St. George's, we believe in the future of St. George's, and we wanna provide and support so that St. George's can be more than it is now. And that means its people, its history, its culture, and everything that St. George's is.
Thank you, Minister. Several questions on this card. Is there a sample city or town that reflects your vision? Does Dockyard reflect your vision? And what tourism plan, what, what is the tourism plan to enhance restaurants, hotels, et cetera, and events?
Yes, actually, I can, I can answer the first one for you too, Minister. If you say, what, what examples do we have? I think Redco is a beautiful example of what we can do. Redco, other than, well, they even borrow their own money. But outside of that, they're self-sufficient. So I think Redco is a good model, and it's a good example of what, what a board can do. And it's a good example of what a board can do at the direction of the minister. And no matter who's in government, you know, I mean, a board will do, hopefully, carry out the vision of the government that's elected by the majority of people in the country. And if the majority of people in the country vote a particular party in, then that particular party has a vision that obviously the electorate were happy with to vote them in. Okay? So, what the government of the day do is they appoint people that can carry out their vision. And hopefully, that vision should be the vision of the people that elected them. What was the second question about, oh, about tourism?
Yeah, that's their question.
Okay. Well, you will know that the Bermuda Tourism Authority announced a national tourism plan recently. In that plan, you'll see all sorts of things that we want to do with tourism. But let's talk about St. George's for a moment. And the person acts, restaurants, hotels, and events. Well, hotel's on the way. That's number one. Now, the restaurants and events, that's interesting. Because I had a meeting with some folks last week from St., or a couple of weeks ago from St. George's. And that's what we want to improve. Because the thing that we're missing in St. George's, what we're told in St. George's is that after a certain time, it becomes a ghost town. In fact, the first gentleman that spoke said he lost the police, lost the fire, lost the golf course, bridges don't work. He wants to hang out with locals. What's it, Wahoos is just around the corner. I had dinner down there a couple of nights ago. Had some tourists in there, had some locals in there. But I think what the, I think what the gentleman was saying is he wants to socialize a little bit more. Well, what's open after 10, 11 o'clock in St. George's? If we have a hotel, we have a cruise ship in town, how many restaurants do we have? How many events are we going to have? Who's going to run them? Who owns the real estate in St. George's? Are they renting it out to entrepreneurs? Or are they not? Are they sitting empty? You all were no better than me. I'm from Somerset. But to me, but to me, to me, it seems that that is the challenge. That is the challenge. You know? So, one of the goals that we have, and I'm sure the minister has well in mind, is, you know, we got to get the hotel. We'll support, give the hotel all the support we can so that they can get it open as quickly as they can. The minister's mentioned the marina. Now, what we need to do now is the property owners in the town, we need them to step up. What opportunities can they give our people to do exactly what this person asks? Restaurants. The man that, or gentleman that spoke first, he, you know, he wants to socialize a little bit. He wants to socialize with locals. I'd like to see him socialize with tourists. Because when I travel down south or I travel anywhere, I want to talk to the locals.
Let me just add to the comments already made. And perhaps the minister responsible for WECO may want to make some comments about WECO if he wishes. But one of the things we want to make sure is that St. George's is not a part of some cookie-cutter model. This is not what it's about. One of the reasons it is moving away from the current act in that it almost puts a cookie-cutter structure onto both the other municipality and St. George's. And it doesn't respond to these specific, unique needs. As a quango, that is a possibility. It's a more modern, adaptable model, where St. Georgians and those who are here, who are administrating and running it, can tailor the interests of the area that they're governing over within the structure. They have more ability. They'll have more financial ability to go out and raise capital for specific projects. They'll have exclusive legal right to manage the affairs of the UNESCO World Heritage Site in the interest of St. George's, partnering with the government. We intend to legislate that. So, there's some very key variables that will make the structure that is being deployed in St. George's unique. And that will be shaped by St. Georgians. Shaped by people in St. George's. It is not meant to be like WECO. It's not meant to be like other or BLDC. It will be a St. George's quango with priorities that are for St. George's. And that is what the strength of it will be, with the financial wherewithal to act in the interest of St. George's.
Next question from the floor. How come you have cut out some of the buses from St. George's? We always get the short end of the stick.
I think the people in Somerset might disagree with that. But let me, let me say this. I think most of you know that we moved from a fleet of 104 buses down to a fleet of between 55 and 60. The schedule that has been, just been finalized, is being worked with the complement of 50 buses. So, we should always have a couple of buses floating so that we can make those rosters work. So, you know, everyone's, everyone's been hurt by the lack of buses, by the lack of maintenance. And, you know, over the last five years, I mean, was not a lot, we're in a lot putting buses, to be honest. And quite frankly, we're going to change that. It's going to take us a little time. Like I said, we put out the RFP for new buses. And we're looking at all of the different options with regard to regular maintenance, whether it be, you know, because we've had so many challenges with the buses that the regular, day-to-day, week-to-week maintenance has been lacking. So, what happens is if you're fixing some of the major things, then the minor things get mixed. You're working on the minor ones, you can't fix the major ones. It's been, the bus, the bus situation has been terrible. And I think everybody's done a pretty good job working with what little resources they have had. But that is being worked on. The entire system up at the bus garage is being looked at. And hopefully, things will improve with time.
Thank you. The next question. What has been the reception from the current corporation of St. George's to the proposed municipal reform? Are they supportive or not?
Thank you for that question. Since we're here talking about St. George's, I can say that they had questions. And at the time that we had our discussions, we weren't at this phase of the, of the process. So, part of what we're doing now, and I'm happy to, and I will be meeting with both respective corporations going forward to talk to them more about how things are going to be shaped going forward. And one of the reasons we're having this meeting is to ensure that the community has an opportunity to have questions. But any of the respective councils can ask me questions anytime that they have about how it's going to be shaped going forward. But I do believe that there's been more questions. And this is a part of the process outside of the consultation. And the time we're using is to answer the questions of everyone, including the respective councils.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody, we do have two microphones in the front of the room. So, if you have a comment or question, feel free to go to the microphone. And in the meantime, I will continue to read from the cards. What is the vision of the bridges that would improve the traffic to St. George?
That's a traffic question that the Minister for Public Works, who's responsible for bridges, can answer. So, I'll turn over the mic to him.
We came to St. George's about four months ago. And on a full presentation on all of the work that has been done in anticipation and preparation to replace both the Swing and Longberry Bridges, we have entered into a contract about, a year ago now, I think, with the company that is designing the new, designed the new bridges. We have a young Bermudian engineer who's been in the United Kingdom since January 2018. As part of that RFP process, the successful bidder was required to take a Bermudian so that he was in at the front end in terms of being able to participate in the design of the new bridges so that we would not have to look outside when they actually construct it. And looking, and we may have some challenges going forward. So, that is the plan. I expect that in the next, in May, they will come and report on the next phase of that process. And following that, we will report to the people of St. George's as we have done so every step of the way. Might I also take the opportunity at this stage, my responsibility extends also to infrastructure. And again, we'd been to St. George's last year to share with you the waste-based and water plan for the town of St. George. And you were to be the template for the rest of the island. Since that visit, we've actually expanded the concept to include the entire eastern end of the island. And you will soon see over at Southside where your sewage and water will be processed. Work being, commencing to improve and replace their infrastructure in anticipation of St. George's utilizing that facility that currently exists at Southside. It is capable of managing the sewage for the entire parish of St. George's. It also has the ability to expand in case you increase the amount of sewage that you produce in St. George. I.e., we will be able to accommodate the new hotel that is coming online, both in terms of their sewage and water needs. And that will generate revenue in order to be able to continue the expansion of the infrastructure of the island. Nationally, we are the size, we're 21 square miles. And so, from a, from a practical point of view, it makes no sense to have a sewage treatment plant in Southside, another one in St. George's, another one in Hamilton, and another one in Dockyard. It just doesn't make any sense. And so, where we're headed is having the ability to deal with both of those issues on a national basis. And that is the direction in which we're heading. And that is where we will affect some economies of scale instead of duplicating what it is that we're doing across the island, infrastructure-wise.
Thank you, Minister. Next question. Are you bringing back early morning ferries?
Well, that is being considered as well, yes. The other thing that everyone will be aware of is we've been working on a green paper for some time with regard to transportation in the island. That should also be ready for your consumption in the very near future, which will include all of, all of our transportation in the country, whether it be the buses, whether it be ferries, you know, mini cars, you know, everything, anything to do with transportation. So, I'll be looking forward to, you know, everyone's feedback on that when it comes out.
Thank you, Minister. The government is in financial distress now. Where are these additional funds coming from? The government survey showed 4 for quango, 177 against.
The government will not have any difficulty absorbing the responsibilities that it will take with this change, which will primarily to do with infrastructure when it comes to St. George's. St. George's will still continue with its current ability through the warfage and other ways to run its affairs on a day-to-day basis. The component that the government will take on is the infrastructure, which the current Minister of Public Works has outlined to you, is already committed a considerable investment towards. So, there isn't going to be any additional funding. It will be rationalized within the existing priorities of government. And perhaps to some degree, because of the model we're pursuing, will rise in priority. Whereas as a municipality, St. George's gets in line after every other department's needs are met. As a quango, you become a part of the priorities of the government with everyone else.
Thank you, Minister. We have a question from the floor. Thank you, sir.
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Minister, I just have a question for you. In your vision, would you believe that you are serving the needs of our young people? Because in St. George's in particular, I think that we all have to remember that in the future, our kids, our young people are going to be living in St. George's and enjoying it. Do you feel comfortable or confident that your plan or whatever you're going to do is going to be about a city for our young people who will live in St. George's? And of course, they have a word. One thing I would like for you to consider when you do make up this board or construction, bring a young person on board. Make it that requirement because we need feedback from these young people and to make them part of our processes. I think we have taken the mantle so much that we forgot them in the process. That's all I have to say.
Great.
Thank you for the suggestion, sir. And I will take that on. And you have a few young people currently on the, on the St. George's council, which I'm sure who are serving very well.
Thank you. Is WECO the furthest afield that government has looked at as a town plan? If not, why not?
No. As I said earlier, quangos are very different in Bermuda. You have WECO, you have BLDC, and you have others. They serve different, specific needs. So, we didn't model this after WECO. We modeled this after what we felt are going to be the needs of the town. It's modeled, our pursuit is in a model that will service specifically the needs. It's not modeled based on some others. Obviously, it's our view that some quangos have worked considerably well for Bermuda. But they are specifically tailored to the needs of those areas and their responsibilities. The same will be for this quango. It will be tailored to the needs of St. George's.
And this is a very similar question. Can you give an example, anywhere in the world, of a municipality run by a quango? If so, why does it succeed?
Most parts of the world, they do not have municipalities that are quangos. They just have erased municipalities altogether. And they've become a part of the central government. That's actually what's happened in most parts of the world where there were municipalities. They haven't gone to a quango. They've gone just absorbed them into the central government, particularly if you want to compare yourselves to other islands to the south. Most of them have gotten rid of their local government because... Yeah, they've gotten rid of their local government, which are municipalities. And they've absorbed them into the central government. We don't believe that that is proper in this case. We believe that a quango, because of the specific, special nature of our municipalities, and particularly St. George's, would better serve. Rather than that, there were, there were two choices. We have felt that the quango is the best choice for the situation that St. George's is.
Next question. Toll buses come into St. George. However, tourists only have time to use the bathroom. 30 minutes is insufficient time for our visitors on toll buses. What is the plan?
It's interesting. Well, well, right now, the tour, the tour buses are private. So, I can't speak to that. If they only stop for half an hour, I just can't speak to that. That's a, that's a private, that's a private thing. I know that we are looking at, once we get our buses, bus fleet up, you know, complement up, we have had discussions about the possibility of bringing back our government bus tours. And I would like to think that if we do reintroduce that, that certainly it won't be a half an hour visit when they come to St. George's.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Penelope Green. I am a walking tour guide in the town of St. George's. But one of the things that I've noticed is that when both ferries come into the town of St. George's, first thing in the morning is but a few thousand sometimes that are coming down at once. Thing is, I've noticed that the transportation is really rough when it comes to getting them to the places where they need to go, especially if some of these people cannot literally walk even right down into the town of St. George's or to the beach or to the forts or to whatever beaches, even Crystal Caves. Now, we don't have much taxis that come down there to help us out when people are getting off the ferry. We have the, we have some drivers that actually come down there and help out. Whoever is available helps us out. And so, I'm just wondering if you folks have a plan for people that really need to get around when they get off the ferry? And now, sometimes as well, when returning, the weather can be bad sometimes. And so, what happens is they cannot catch the ferry back to Dockyard. And times are the essence for them sometimes, or depending on the day, like Tuesdays, especially Tuesdays and Thursdays. or depending on the day, like Tuesdays, especially Tuesdays and Thursdays where these boats leave earlier. And so, sometimes these bus stops are very full with people.
Thirty seconds.
Where actually we, or myself and a few others, some of these seniors, even when football was around, we'll go to the bus stop and actually help these folks to actually get onto these buses. And then so many are left behind. And then they're stressed out wondering how to get back to Dockyard before their ship actually leaves. So do you folks have a plan, or have you thought of what you might be able to do to help these folks if they are not stuck in the town of St. George's? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, thanks very much. The first thing I would say is it sounds like an, an opportunity for entrepreneurs. That's my first, that's my first statement. Now, again, with regard to, to the transportation green paper that, that we have just completed and will be issued soon, that, that, the transportation in, in the country needs, needs of, needs a very good look at. And I'm looking forward to having meetings like this to talk about transportation in the country only, because it's going to be very, very interesting to get the feedback from you all, and then, you know, us then decide on how we're going to tackle it. Because I can tell you right now, sitting on my desk, is, is 65 applications for 95 minibus. Okay, 65 for 95. Okay, we also have, you know, in the industry, the taxi industry, you know, you know, everyone knows that we have just under 600. Okay, now out of that 600, I'm told that, you know, we have a significant number of taxis that only do corporate work. We have another significant number that, that are, you know, run by some of maybe our older folks. Now, I'm getting pretty old, so I mean, I gotta be careful how I say that. But, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, we, we probably only have between 200 and 300 taxis that are, that are, you know, running on, on a constant basis, which again, we need to look at that. Because as we move forward with changing the transportation, you know, habits in the country, not everybody's going to be happy.
We have gypsy cab drivers.
We have somebody, yes, and I'm aware, and, and no, I'm aware of, I am aware of those too.
I like, I like to see a little bit more organized, some kind of meeting.
Well, let, let me, I tell you this. One thing we are considering is, is looking at a larger ferry as well, which will certainly help. That will help with that situation. But I've heard the stories. I've heard the stories, not only with, with folks that want to come down on a ferry and go back on a bus or taxi, but also the folks that are up in the central and, and western end that come down for dinner, or come down for lunch and can't get a ride back. So all these things, we need, we need to talk. There's going to be some hard conversations. There's going to be some tough conversations. But that, that, that will come. So your point is taken, and I hear you loud and clear. And whilst I'm, whilst I'm at it, I'd like to thank you, if you're one of tour guides for St. George's.
Yes, that's my own business.
Yes, I, I've, I've heard about your tours, and you should be proud.
Just also, one follow-up comment. Some of the issues which have been raised and stated, clearly there's a need for a, although we have Bermuda Economic Development Corporation here in St. George's doing work in the east end, perhaps as part of a future corporation, there can be a business development unit that focuses on developing entrepreneurial endeavors in St. George's, but also attracting business. And that can be a committee that is, is staffed by St. Georgians, who are looking at the needs of St. George's, working with the BEDC, but also working with the future corporation to fulfill those goals of advancing business activity in St. George's specifically related to the needs of St. George's.
Thank you, Minister. I just want to be mindful of the time. It's 7:47. We'll be ending promptly at 8 o'clock. So you two may be the last two questions. We'll see how the time goes. Sir?
Yes, Raymond Chee, DPT, in respect to tourists not spending enough time here in the island, I mean, in St. George, or they don't have enough time. One of the issues we had was the infrastructure. If they go eat, they have to go to the supermarket, get something to eat. There's not enough bathrooms in St. George for the amount of people from the cruise ships and the buses. It's the infrastructure that needs to be improved, as far as the taxis are concerned. The minute we get more hotels up in different areas, we will have a better circulation of taxis. It's not that we don't have enough transportation. It's the circulation. That's why they sit at the airport. They're not going to come to St. George if they feel there's no work here. And this gentleman can attest to that. The more hotels we had before, we had less taxi seats. We didn't have no vans, but there was a circulation of the taxis. That's the issue. That is the issue. So the minute we get these hotels up, and I don't believe in no boutique hotels. I believe in a full-fledged hotel, far as I'm concerned. It seems as if, to me, there's a struggle between international business and tourism. Boutique hotels are not going to do it. They're not going to employ our people. Everyone's not going to be an actuary. Put up some hotels, promote the island, run the taxi business. People still love this country.
Thirty seconds.
They don't even know who have them, don't even, they didn't even know it exists. So let's put tourism alongside international business. Let's push it. This, this is our goal. I mean, this is what we built the country of, tourism. Come on, let's be real. That's my point.
Thank you.
I'll just say real quickly, Mr. Machete, I share, I share your, I share your passion.
Sir?
Hello, my name is Lauren Bean. I am a recent St. George's resident. And, but the one thing I am certain of is that I have become a more proud Bermudian because I've learned to live and appreciate St. George's. So St. George's is important to St. Georgians. It's also important to the rest of Bermuda too. I want to thank you also, Minister, for tonight, for coming out and giving the detail that you did. As we were in our previous meeting before, that our mayor called, it was because you weren't there that a lot of persons did not feel as comfortable. But I was really glad to hear tonight about more details behind what you're doing. And I believe, I feel a whole lot more comfortable in discussing this with you moving forward because of the details you provided tonight. I want to also allude to something that a gentleman came up with in terms of the VIC as being perhaps a bit of a problem with us. We have, you said, the National Tourism Plan that's being carried out by the BTA. However, St. Georgians are feeling not that great with some of the aspects of that plan as regards to the town of St. George. And this raises my question. If you have a Quango for the town, and a Quango for tourism, and you have a conflict over the town, which one takes priority?
Thank you.
Well, that's a very good question. But let's, let's see how, let's see how that pans out. All I can tell you is this, all I'll tell you is this, Mr. Bean, is that if there is an issue between St. George's and the Tourism Authority, I work very close with our St. Georgian MPs. That's why I'm here tonight. And, and we do work close between the Minister of Public Works, you know, Minister Roban, and of course, MPs Renee Ming, Mr. Swan, Tanei Ferbit, MP Burgess, LaVita Fogo. We, we do work close, and, and that's why we're all here tonight. So I can assure you that if there's any issue, it, it'll be nipped in the bud really quickly.
Can I just assure Reverend Bean and the audience in that in this dynamic that you've outlined, I'll be advocating for St. George's.
Now, we ain't going to talk about the cops though.
I got plenty of red on. I don't, I don't, I don't want to leave this room tonight and think, and have folk believe that we sidestep the question about debt. And I'd like to speak about that for a moment. First of all, there is good debt and bad debt. And the most important thing in debt is how you manage it. Because you look at every country, no, don't even go country. You probably look at every family in this room. You got debt. I expect to go to heaven and earn people money. And so, it really is a question about how you manage it. And this government has taken this step. The Minister of Finance, some of that squealing you may have heard, last month was from those of us in the cabinet who were being told we weren't getting any more money. And we had to make do with what we had in terms of being able to still provide the services that we provide to the country. You will be aware that five or six months ago now, we started on the road of amalgamating two of the Quangos in the Ministry of Public Works. To bring you the Land Development Company and to bring you the Housing Corporation. That was done, and, and WECO are part of that whole overall plan as well. But we wanted to do it in a methodical way so as not to upset the applecart. But it's designed so that we are a country of 21 square miles. We don't need three different empires trying to run and operate in silos. And so, you can have some immediate economies of scale. And so, what you will see, and what, what, what we are starting, starting to see already with the combination of BHC and BLDC, is already some economies of scale, not just in, in terms of personnel, but in terms of their ability to be able to do things and increase their purchasing power because you're dealing with a wider entity. You will also see in this year's budget that in relation to the debt, it is our expectation to start to pay down on that debt. It's a small amount this year, but we are headed in the right direction. And so, whilst the cash limits for every ministry have essentially stayed the same, we are going to do more with less. And we are headed in the direction of addressing the debt that we have. But I, I want to stress that, you know, we, you, we should not concentrate on the fact that we got $2.4 billion worth of debt. We have to concentrate on whether we are taking the necessary steps to address and to bring that debt down. And if you in fact, if you in fact expand your economy, which is where this government is headed, and you increase the amount of economic activity in the country, you will generate revenue not just for everybody in business in this country, but you also generate revenue for the government. But you must do it in a methodical way. So you will not hear us saying the solution to all of our problems is bringing in another 6,000 more people. The solution to our problem is first, getting Bermudians that want to work, working, and making, and making a livable wage so that they can operate within this economy. And there are a number of quivers in this, in this, in this package that we have. You will have heard that the government is headed down the road of entering into an arrangement with, well, not entering, yes, entering into arrangement, to reduce mortgages in this country. That's not just, that's not, that's for the average person. Because if you increase the amount of money that you put in your pocket, then you will have more money to, to spend in this economy. And you will, you will generate additional revenue in this, in this, in this, in this economy. And that's where we're headed. And so, in, in virtually every step that we take, it's trying to reduce the amount of money that we're spending without reducing the amount, the number of services. Because the alternative is reducing personnel, and we do not wish to do that. Because if government decided to say, right, you name me 20 civil servants who we had to get rid of, where do you think they're going to go? Straight down to Global House to apply for financial assistance. So you're cutting off your nerves to spite your face. So I'd like for you, I'd like for folk to, to understand that whilst some of the chatter is that we are not, there is debt and we should, the sky is falling, it really isn't. And that we are all in this same boat together. And let me just touch on one other issue that, that is, seems to be trying to get people excited, and that's about once a week garbage collection. So it's not a decision that I made all by myself because I woke up one morning and wanted to piss people off. It was based on data, and not just the fact that we are saving more than a half a million dollars in overtime. Forget all of that, though. Think back to 18 months ago when you had twice a week garbage collection. And we could not guarantee that the garbage was going to be collected on the day that we said we were coming for it. Couldn't do it. Think back to your experience over the last 18 months, and in the main, the day it's supposed to be collected, it has been collected. And so, I know that change is difficult, and for anybody, just the word change makes us go into a state. But I think that if we are going to progress as a country, then we have to be receptive to change. And, and part of that is having the type of communication and collaboration that we're having tonight. Thank you very much.
So the time is now 7:59, and...
The one question. We'll get the one question from the gentleman.
Okay, do you have a question or a comment?
Uh, question.
Okay, so I ask you to give your question. Go ahead.
Honorable Ministers of the House, our presentation was really good. It got a bit deep when older people were starting to talk about yesterday. And I think you can try to detail this in meeting and have people like Sinequa help in organizing and gear it to the younger people, because this new town of St. George's is going to be their town. So gear something, what you did right here tonight, leave out all the old thinking because they're not invited. They don't even understand it. Want no part of it in St. George's because it is a ghost town. But at the end of the day, on their behalf, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, just being for real down here. I've watched it. You can gear this towards young people, and they will come out and vote like they did for Sinequa.
Thank you. Do you have a statement?
Uh...
And just to be clear, you'll be the absolute last.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Andre Walgreen. I'm coming forward tonight because transportation is very hard in St. George's, right? We have taxis, taxis that come down there. But the reason why the taxis get discouraged because they've got gypsy cab drivers down there that's taken away from the taxi drivers, right? And I, I think that's not good because somebody's going to get hurt because these tourists didn't even know what car they're getting in. Right? They don't. No type of ID or nothing. I know everybody wants to make a dollar, right? But they're just jumping, I see guys sometimes with their cars, and they may, right? I don't know who's in there, right? And they're just jumping in, like, come in my car, right? You don't know whose car, you know, these people don't know whose car they're getting into. They don't know. So they have no type of ID, right? And they're forcing sometime these tourists to say, well, I'm going to take you this place and that place, right? What's the price? You don't even know a price. All of them's probably got different prices and charging, overcharging the tourists, right? I see, I go, I rock down in George's, when I used to rock there, and they're coming around the corner there, the line is going all the way around past Wolfhead. And you got a taxi coming in and can't get to people because they're all like, that's my job. It belongs to the taxi driver. That's the problem that we're got. It's bad. It is, it's, it's bad. Going over, yep.
Thirty seconds.
Everybody needs a job, right? But it's wrong. Thank you, sir. And, and it's bad. Somebody's going to get hurt.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Minister, would you like to close?
Thank you. I just would like to thank everybody for coming tonight. This was always a part of how we wanted to engage with you around these plans. The government desires to be inclusive and open to the people. And it was never going to be a case where this was a plan that we barnstormed ahead without at least having an opportunity to talk to people in St. George's. This has been going on for quite a bit of time. But we understand, some people are concerned about the direction. But I want to assure you, and I'm just going to go back over a, a part of my speech so you understand what, where we're looking to go, and what we want for the Old Town, and what this bill is going to start a process for the Old Town. It will mean enhanced services. It will mean improved infrastructure. It will mean a better upkeep of your public spaces. It will mean moving forward with the creation of the Marina. It will mean the creation of the World Heritage Management Plan for the town. So you can keep your World Heritage designation. You must keep... You must keep it, and we're going to make sure you keep it. It will improve the financial management of the town. The communication between the residents and the officials can improve as well. It will ensure that the residents have more of a say in the affairs of the town. No one's job is going to be lost. There's going to be no dismantling of the existing administrative structure. Those who are currently involved with the management of the town are going to continue to be involved with the management of the town. There's still going to be a mayor and a councillors. This is not a takeover. This is an opportunity for the government to work with St. George's to make sure St. George's gets more. I am very happy to be here tonight. I will be back to talk more about how things will go forward. This government wants to be a partner in the further development of St. George's with you. So with that, I thank you again for coming, and I look forward to the next opportunity to be with you here in St. George's to talk about what we're going to do together. And also have a good night, and everybody get home safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Just as you're leaving, if I can ask you to give my staff, my team and I a hand.